Okay, ready?
Yep.
We'll call the South Burlington School Board to or- meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So, we'll take comments from the public regarding any items that are not on the agenda.
Here we have one maybe. Hi, Kendall.
Sure, well, you can say it, whatever's comfortable.
Hi, my name's Kendall Loomis and I am the Program Director for Common Roots, which is a nonprofit in South Burlington that does food education and access work in the school district and also in the larger community. I've given you all our program packets, a little explanation of what we do and who we are within South Burlington, and a brief synopsis of our six programs. The main one that concerns you all is our Farm-to-School Education Program, which we've been in the classrooms K through five, giving farm-to-school lessons for the past six years. And this year, we just graduated our first class of fifth graders who have never known elementary school without farm-to-go, or farm-to-school, excuse me. So, we're really excited about that, welcoming the sixth graders into this school next year. Three years ago, we took on the South Burlington Farmer's Market after Healthy Living asked to pass it off to somebody within the community to continue the community service as it is to South Burlington, creating a place where the community can come together, get to know their farmers, engage with their neighbors, and it's an opportunity for us to continue farm-to-school education through the summer with our Pop Club program, which is for students five through 12, to engage them in responsible buying power. They come, take part of the program, get $3 token after going through a mini food education lesson, and they get to go and spend their own $3 with a farmer, and they're much more likely to eat eggplant if they get a chance to buy their own purple vegetable that they don't know what it is, right? So, three years ago, we took it on with the support of the school district a little bit, and Healthy Living was really happy to be able to pass it off to somebody who does food education within South Burlington. During that time, there was a consideration of waiving the $100 rental fee for the parking lot outside here between the two schools, and at that time, the decision was to not make exceptions for different groups within the South Burlington community. And so, six years into Common Roots' work, and in our fourth year of managing the South Burlington Farmer's Market as a community service, Common Roots gains no financial advantage from managing the Farmer's Market. We fund through private donations, the Farmer's Market Manager position, and the Pop Club Educator position. I'm here to make a request for reconsideration around the rental fee outside for the parking lot. In the past three years, I guess, yeah, not this past school year, but the prior one, Common Roots contributed $40,000 to the Nutritional Services Department here within the school to update kitchen equipment in the elementary, middle, and high school, and to be able to really achieve some of Rhonda's goals around being able to prepare fresh local food and keep it longer, so more refrigeration, ability for cooking space, tilt skillets, things like that. And then this past year, we provided $20,000 to be able to bring Chef James McCarthy from the Inn at Shelburne Farms to come and do some education for the staff within Nutrition Services, to be able to help grow skills around cooking from scratch and preparing things. He also learned a tremendous amount by working in the school district and is really eager and hopeful to be able to come back next year. He had an amazing time. And then last summer, as well with the support of the Schools Out program, we raised $45,000 for the purchase of a minute, a minibus for the school district. So, I just share those pieces because I feel that Common Roots shows clear commitment and coordination with the school district around providing opportunities for our students to set a healthy ground level and carry on around food, education, and access work, and so that's the basis for where the request comes from, so that we can take those $2,000 over the course of our 20-week Farmer's Market and put them towards more education work for our students.
Thank you, Kendall. Do you want to respond?
So, I, yeah, again, on the request, I would say, let us work on that response. I'll work certainly with John, and we'll take, we'll certainly come back to the board on a response. But I think more importantly, although that's important to you, it's more important to definitely share with the board, you know, how important the program has been to our kids when we talk about our food instability, when we talk about, you know, the importance of providing education around the importance that nutrition plays, not just in the schools, but in everywhere that a child goes, has been huge. And it's not just about food, it's also about access. So, I mean, I just can't say enough positive things about the relationship that we've had with Common Roots and the work that's been happening in the district. So, it's been really, just been happening, and I think, as Kendall said, we're going to have kids that are now, they're pushing us, you know, as a result of kind of the embedded learning, and they're the ones that are asking for and wanting more, and we're seeing that pretty much throughout the district and a lot of the things that are happening. So, we have work still to do, but again, we're really, I just want to publicly say that we're so excited about our continued collaboration with Common Roots. So, anyway, we will certainly, and that can be fairly quick around a response, so that there's not a lot of wait period in that.
I'm also more than happy to submit something in writing to Delina tomorrow to be able to piece about.
Yeah, I think that would be great, Kendall, then. Obviously, it's recorded here in the minutes of the meeting, but since it's something that, it would be, it would be good.
Okay. Thank you. Carol.
Hi.
Hi.
I have a heated comment, is Stuart had all of us kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers in our in-service training. When we look at the new next-generation science standards, I am very happy about the content overall, but there is nothing in the next set of standards that explicitly moves teachers in the area of food or nutrition education under our next set of science standards. So, I think from my lens, it's a missing piece, and so, I'm delighted that we are lining up to both, we've surveyed our educator from this year who will be with us next year, but it's even more important that we have farm-to-school because there's nothing in the new curriculum unless you put it under life cycles. So, life cycle can be a frog, a chicken, it can be any living thing, so it could be a carrot, but there's nothing explicit. So, from a lens, from a teacher's lens, I think it's imperative that we continue to focus on food lessons for children.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none.
Thank you very much.
Amendments?
So, amendments. We need to include item number 13A, which is the bid recommendation for the Palo Alto Network. It's the firewall for action. And also add to the new hire report Patrick Nepp, whom is a 1.0 FTE teacher whom will be at Rick Marcott Central School. In your packet, you have the salary analysis, but you didn't have it on your consent, under your actual hires. So, it's within your packet, but it didn't make it onto that list, so with those amendments, we're good to go.
Announcements.
So, you have announcements at your side. Where do you somewhere here? So, tomorrow and Friday, we have administrative retreat. Again, administrators, I'm going to say, are pooped out. Stuart's pooped out too, but it's been a very productive three days, as we try to, and the high school calls it, post-graduation professional development. So, you know, kind of playing along with the PBGRs, it's, you know, some more acronyms. But again, I think it's proved to be really positive. I was over at the high school today, this morning, listening to their work and some of their plan forward, so I'm excited about that work. We're also then going to be taking that both tomorrow and Friday administratively. We're going to be at the police department. The police department, you know, allows us to spend some time in their large conference room, which is a nice collaborative area, and we often get Trevor to come in for a bit and connect, but we're going to be there for the next two days. Holly, Ruel, Pat Burke, and myself are headed off the June 28th through the 2nd, and we're headed to the Tuck School of Businesses, is running an educators series, and so we were invited, or I was invited and asked to bring, if I could bring two other administrators. So, it's pretty extensive. There's a significant amount of pre-reading and activity, but it all is centered around kind of decision-making processes from district level to building level, decision-making and processes. And again, I put some of that kind of oversight in there, from strategic thinking to, you know, leading teams, et cetera. So, we're excited about this. This is the first time that actually this is being held, and we'll be accompanied by, with other administrators from around the country, actually. So, I'll have more to report on that. Also going on, we have BES going on, which, we have a number of staff that are going to be at that. This is also a place where we take the work that we've just done, or doing these last three days, the work we'll do at administrative, which myself and Pat and Holly will take to Tuck. Other of our administrators will be at the BES conference with other staff, and Stuart will be at that one as well. So, there's a nice opportunity for us to continue to take our work and our planning and pull that all together, so a lot going on there. The City Fest, some of you probably have already seen that. You've seen some flyers around town, maybe, that are looking like that. City Fest, which is going to happen August 15th, and this is similar to National Night Out, but it's a little bit different in their desire. They've asked for the utilization of some of our school properties, of which we had to say no, because if you've been over to the high school as of late, that project is underway, and the lobby doesn't look the same anymore. So, we don't have a lot of space available to them to use inside space, but we are going to help support busing and transportation to make that happen on August 15th. We're happy to announce that the middle school, the head custodian here is going to be getting an award actually next week, Thursday, the 25th, at Hartford High School through the Vermont Custodial and Maintenance Association, which is also part of, you know, larger group of folks that recognize. He was nominated by a lot of, a lot of our folks put forward names, but it also came through many other places by people who've been visiting the school, asking questions about maintenance and how custodial works. So, he will be celebrated. And then, feedback around the master planning and visioning process, again, you've all been in receipt of the report that was issued. I know that you probably aren't all through that, but we're asking that you get questions and feedback back to me, so I can then forward on to the task force by June 22nd. And I know Dan's already worked on that, and some of you already have also read, but we're trying to make sure that both from the city council and from the board, those questions can be funneled in, give the task force the opportunity to respond to questions that you may have, and be able to then be ready for the July 8th Steering Committee meeting. That will be July 8th. It's going to be here, is that right, Delina?
Yes.
So, it'll be back here?
Yeah.
And it will be the first hour. We may need to talk about, if that timeframe works, but whole hour, the hour will be devoted to the, to that very specific piece with the council, with the city council here as well.
So, on behalf of my traveling senior colleagues here, I'm just going to say that I-
Going to be hard.
I think it's going to be tough to get that 22nd deadline, especially for people out of the country.
Yeah. So, what we, again, the idea here is so that they all don't funnel at once, so if there are people that, you know, can't get it all done, they can move some of them to us, but we'll obviously keep it open. I just don't want everything to come at last minute to the task force, and then they're in a reaction mode, yeah.
David, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Kathy.
Just ask about, and I had to scoot out last meeting, I do apologize, the survey, were they going to actually come out and survey the public like they were initially supposed to have done prior to that last meeting?
So, it's a good, it's a good question in regard to this. The task force, fully intended, and Abby's actually here, fully intended to try to, always had the idea of doing the survey. And again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, in the end, we came, time became critical, because when we got to the summer months, we knew we were going to lose a lot of people. The survey also, you know, in the beginning was probably broader than we thought needed to be, as a result of kind of the ongoing work. So, the survey still remains an important component. It's an important component that's been recommended by the task force, that needs to, you know, strongly suggested to be done by the council and the board collaboratively, to push out a survey that asks further questions to the community that would then help determine, you know, next steps. So, it's still in the queue. I'm strongly in support of it. I think it's critically important, because again, we had good attendance at a community meeting, but good attendance in relationship to the whole city, no. So, there's going to be, you know, some conversation around how we go back out and how we inform. And again, the board and the council, you know, will need to talk about that, you know, around how they want to go about doing that. Again, I'm hoping they'll want to do it, and if they do, then how they'll go about and when they'll do that, so, all right?
My concern then is just that if everything will be moving forward, I mean, if you already have a date for the next meeting, that I, you know, ideas will be moving forward without having been approved by the community.
Yeah.
And as it is even, I'm afraid that the survey is going to be skewed in terms of what the panel has already come up with. You know, for example, I would not be in support of selling that school because it is so healthy. It's like our healthiest school, Central. Unfortunately, that's the way that it is, and to me, I think it's going to cost the voters more money to actually have to go other routes. So, I'm just wondering what that survey might encompass.
So, in part, I mean, I want to be fair to your assessment that things are moving forward. Right now, the report has been received, and the council and the board, and even some of the, they're still working through it. Some have responded to questions, and they're asking good questions. So, I don't want people to think that, like, just because they made, you know, recommendations, that those recommendations are now moving forward, they've received the report, and they're in the process of digesting the report, both council and board. And part of that would be to ask the community what other concerns, similar to maybe yours, then those come back and then also inform the council and the board of critical information. And I don't know what the, I don't know what the timeline is, you know? The board hasn't had any decision timeline around, we want to do this in the next X number of months or X number of years. No conversation has happened there. Perhaps at the city side, I don't know. But again, I think, you know, I can speak at least the direction that the board's given me. They've given no specific timeline. They wanted this charge to be addressed so that they could have as much possible information available to them around how to go forward, or if to go forward, and if so, how to go forward, so.
Yeah, I would just say, Kathy, we've not even talked as a board about it. We've all read the report or are reading it, but we've not even had a discussion together about it, so.
Thank you.
But maybe that goes right into our next agenda item, which is, okay.
Yeah, you're right there. So, in the next agenda item is master planning, financial stewardship, and city-school collaboration. Let me, let me just pause for a quick second on that, and the part of the city-school collaboration, we did learn, Elizabeth and I did learn from the city, that the solar project that was on the, I always want to, dump isn't the right word.
Yeah.
Capt.
Recycle place.
Landfill, thank you, Dan. Is still wanting to move forward, but the financing side of it is not, is on hold. Again, the financing side of that agreement has not, came out, has not, has not moved forward. So, they're currently looking at other possible options to get funding for that, and how that will look, we don't know. So, just again, part of good communication is we're on hold with that, all right? And again, actually, I think somebody asked a question in the board packet. Yeah, the solar farm, it was the last question, and again, we're working on that with the city to see where that's at. Again, that was a collaborative effort between city and school.
Is there a stop date by which that has to be done?
I don't know, I don't know specifically with-
I can't remember.
With where that's at. I think it's going to move forward, but again, it's all tied up in the, how the funding's going to happen.
The concern is there is going to be the eligibility for some of the rebates or incentives or whatever they're called in this case.
Yeah, if we can stay underneath the same or not, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, we'll keep you posted. I just felt that was important. Under master planning and visioning, obviously, we've just talked a good, a good bit about that already, but all good questions. Next meeting date is going to be July 8th. The task force is working to set another meeting. I don't know, Abby, do you know? Is it the 20?
It's July 29th, but I know a lot of people can't make it.
June 29th?
That's what I meant, June 29th.
Yeah, okay.
But a lot of people can't make it.
So, I'm not sure where that's going to rest, you know? Again, we'd like to have the majority of the folks there, or all of folks there, so I haven't, I don't know where that will, where that will be. The other part is the flexibility around, you know, getting the questions back in the most timely manner with that June 22nd kind of idea would be, would be good.
So, let me just see if I'm on the right track here. As I understand it, we're going, the board, the school board is going to be putting forward its questions about the report that we'd like to see elaborated or responded to or filled in. Those are going to be combined by, with the ones from the council, that by you and Kevin and representatives or something? And is that going to try to get to this 29th meeting for the, and then on the 8th, we're really going to hear a response to some menu of questions that made it through that process up to that point?
That's, that's the desired, that's the desired path.
So, we should have on July 8th, the best collective understanding we can get of what it is that the recommendations entail and are based on?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I think we're stretching time-wise here, and it always feels like things are rushed, but the idea is that if we can get the majority of the questions, they can be collated. There's probably likely going to be some that are similar, and that would be a far more efficient way to respond.
I think it makes sense to go down to a set of essential questions that are common, but-
And so, that then can be shared, but then I think there's going to also need to be the opportunity for dialogue and questions, and you know, from the board and from the council around, you know, did you go far enough? Did you not go far enough? Did you consider this or not? That may not be in the report, but maybe a question that the board member or council member might want to ask, so, anyway.
And I would say, although you're rushing us to get through the report, the school board is not going to rush through this decision.
Right. And that's important, I think, for the community to hear. You know, again, there's been an awful lot of feedback, all specific to, in the best interests of kids, and, you know, we're proud to have a community that's engaged in it. And I do worry still that, you know, is everybody reading? Is everybody seeing? I mean, there's been, I've had a few emails, like, I didn't know about certain, you know, meetings, you know, the community meeting, and so there's always that concern that, you know, are we getting the word out as much as possible? And it's going to be important right now that we do that equally, right now, to make sure people know where we're at, similar to, I think, what Kathy's indicating. You know, those are, those are good questions that probably need to get out more information, although Cory's here, and she's really good at helping us get that information out from the other paper.
She is.
But we need to help additional ways as well.
Will you let us know, David or Delina, about if the task force is actually going to meet on the 29th?
Yeah, I, again, I haven't weighed in. I've seen some of the email. Abby's alluding to that more, more than I know, really, that, I don't know if it's 50/50 or what the number is, but I'd like to see that we pick a date, or maybe we need to pick two dates and figure out a way where people can be there. Probably unlikely we'll get 100%, and this is part of our, was the worry of, you know, where we are in, yeah, so.
I think that we put it out there, it's trying to be an understanding of the open meeting laws of, you know, if we could all, maybe the task force members, see, you know, the comments and questions that come back.
Yeah.
I think if that was, perhaps people could contribute to the meeting electronically rather than actually physically being there.
Yeah.
But I don't think anybody wants to miss the opportunity to see the questions and have an opportunity to respond.
Nice.
Okay, thanks. Superintendent's report.
Yeah. So, next is really, just talking about assessment and coordination of our school's schedule. And one of the things, again, this came up from the board, specifically, you know, Stuart and I, I think, were, who were, those that were in attendance, there was a concern around kind of assessment dates that were coming up. These are some of our half-days. These were scheduled days of a variety of other assessments that happen throughout the year. And so, one of the things that we definitely recognize is the need to do as much as we possibly can to coordinate that. I will, I'm here to tell you, we don't have that schedule, you know, but that's part of what we're going to be communicating. I don't want to say this is the only thing we're communicating or working on, but we recognize that on one side, we have to be compliant, and on the other side, you know, we need time to do the work. And again, we, we have only so much time to do that, and obviously, I think we're all wanting to be clear that we value student instruction time. And so, what we've, what we've tried to do is make it, you know, provide it in a way that allows us to do that. For some folks, they see us as very disruptive, and so we're going to look at that. Are there ways with S-BAC testing? Not some, again, I'm not saying anything bad about the testing, but it's not easy to administer, and we'll give you more of that detail in the future. But we have to think carefully. It's not as easy just to say, we're going to just test these kids, and all the other kids can come, because in some ways, we have content people who have to be, have to actually administer the task. You can't simply just say, here you go, go sit and have a proctor who doesn't know anything about the content. You actually have to be there. You have to have the content people there, and that creates a disruption, as you can imagine, to the schedule when you may be the teacher who teaches this grade, and this grade, and this grade, and this content. So, it's a little, it's far, far more complex than, than some people may think.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
But could we, for instance, do the Community Service Day, which was an addition, an add-on to a missed instruction day during some of that testing of one grade?
So, again, easy, easy to say a quick yes to that, but part of that is, you know, when you have, and again, the high school's easy to pick on because you have people who teach, can teach all students, and so you've got to be careful about who then does that, and you want to be mindful that you don't want this to be just an activity that doesn't have merit, right? Or proper supervision and meaning. So, those are some of the things. We're going to talk about that. And, you know, we recognize as we're ramping up into more and more assessment, S-BAC being one, it's driving away more instruction, and we're increasing assessment. So, for those then that are being tested that are here, and then those that are not here, I mean, we're, so we're concerned about that disproportionate balance between instruction and assessment. So, we're going to, we're going to talk about it.
Do you have the dates, or do, like, do you set the dates, or does the department set the dates and?
We have, we have some leeway, but they come out with windows of where we got to do that, and Stuart, and you can give me some more specific on the various-
You know, the shift for last year, I mean, were two things. One is, there wasn't fall testing, so that we had, used to have half-days in the fall that we didn't have because there was no assessment. The S-BAC, this was the first year we did it, and so we, we really set it up in a way that we could bring teams to all the schools to really help the teachers do it. Now that we have a better understanding and people have been through it once, it's not quite as scary, and we are actually looking at which parts of the tests need some closure and which parts can we do without that by, you know, utilizing the window in a larger way for our schools. So, I think that we, we've learned stuff that will help with that. The other thing to know, though, is that the 11th grade need cabinet science, which there had been some talk that it was going to end at the end of this year, actually is going to continue for two more years. So, all 11th graders will- So all 11th graders will be tested in science also in May. And so for 11th graders, May, between APs and kneecaps and S-Backs, it's a-
The ACTs and SATs.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Is a very intense area of assessment, and we are all curriculum people and others, you know, are talking to the state about that, because also, there's the access test, which our ELL students take, which has traditionally also been in the spring, right around April vacation. We're seeing if we can at least move that into an earlier time. So, all those things are being taken into consideration, trying to figure out how to have the least disruption to the student's schedule and the parents as well.
So we, so again, we, I don't, I don't have a formal proposal, we know it's something that's important to the board, it's important to us, we're gonna, we're gonna come up with, we know we need to communicate it broadly to the community, parents and guardians, and probably needs to get identified on our calendar the best we can, so that there's clarity around, around that, so.
And the high school does publish a separate calendar, because these are days that really impacts the high school, because they're the people who don't teach in teams, they don't teach in classrooms, they teach across the whole school and the curriculum, and that makes a staffing issue.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. So the Orchard Project Fund, and John's done a nice job in your packet, providing a little bit of just quick information, but essentially, we're not ready to recommend any savings as a result, and it was initially set up that we, obviously, it was an unfunded project. It was an unfunded project because of real height, real concerns with high water table at Orchard, particularly with spring, and I think actually, now that we, in retrospect, look back and say it was a good decision, because it's been a wet spring, and we took money from the proposed amount that we were gonna allot to the retirement fund, and we did say that in the end, we would re, do the very best we could to repurpose the retirement fund up to, if we could, back up to its normal. We're not ready to do that, and basically, what John's saying here is that we, we, we need additional time to see how we're gonna close out the year, and so we're, we're fairly close to that, so with the proposal here is that we'd have it closer, we'd be able to close this out in 2.4, in the financial condition, conditions and activities, and we would do that in September. Obviously, you'll probably hear a little bit more as time goes on about how the year comes to an end, but I think it's a reasonable and appropriate time set for that to occur. So I don't know if you have questions or comments for myself or John in that regard.
No, I think I understand what you're talking about here on the financial side, but just remind me of the project itself, is it now complete, and is it meeting expectations?
So, yeah, go ahead, John.
Hundred, it was budgeted for $130,000, and $100,000 was to come from additional money we had put aside for the retirement fund. The, the project was 90, is 90% complete, and there's paving to be done, if you're over there, you'll see, paving to be done and grass to be planted. The, the contract said to do that in May, but we didn't wanna disrupt school. So Monday morning, I'll be over there, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna finish it up.
We're planting the grass?
Planting the grass and paving, you'll see, you'll see places that are paving. There's, there's always something, schools, the schools out, summer school, special needs kids are all at that school, so it'll take some coordination, but we did-
So John, just, there would be-
Answer the-
That sounds like polishing the shoes. The question is-
No, it's definitely not.
Do the shoes work?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, on May 15th, on May 15th, we tested two of the classrooms, one was deemed as very problematic, and another one that was in the swamp. And the, the results are dramatic, how, how much the drainage works and how dry the rooms are. So yes, it works, yeah.
Good.
So it was a, it was a very, very worthwhile project, and I think uncovered a lot of, you know, that there was pretty much nonexistent drainage there, which was attributed, which was attributing to that very wet, that area, so you, you always wonder if it had any effect, and what John's saying here is that major effect, and if you look at where the drainage is happening, you know, wet days, things are, things are flowing. So we're, we're lucky, and again, as I said, it's been, we've had some pretty significant wet periods here that we would've been in trouble probably.
We especially arranged a trial for it.
Yeah, right, thanks. Yeah, you can get rid of the trial now.
We're ready for that to end.
Yeah, we're ready for the warm weather.
Since we can stop that now?
Thanks, Dan.
I'll put the order in tomorrow.
Yeah.
So we can move on-
No, I didn't mean to be lenient.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm getting the-
Tell me that covering it up, if it doesn't work, it is, you know, imperative.
No, no, we're gonna continue testing because we don't want that kind of problem there.
Yeah.
So we can-
A lot of people dealing with these kinds of problems these days, you know.
Move on to Agenda Item 8, Executive Limitations Policy Monitoring. This is an action item, and I think that there's action on both items underneath this, is that correct?
That would, that, that would be the desire on both. So, before we do that, maybe, we should've started out, but we're obviously absent two board members.
Right.
Elizabeth, who's away, and Martin, who's away, and Julie's sitting in his chair, and, but again, they would both like to be here, I think they'd both like to be here. They always wanna be here, but, that's what you can say, and if the meeting goes really quick, you'll say-
Yeah.
Maybe they don't, maybe they shouldn't be so often. So, 2.1, Treatment of Parents and Guardians is continued from our, from our previous, again, as Julie said, it does call for action, and it's a seven-page, out of the seven pages, particularly the focus was on the last time, page 2 of 7, which dealt with policy, Detail Policy Number 2.
Mm-hmm.
And highlighted in yellow, and again, I have to thank Delina and Meg for, they're always doing a good job to help me with some clarity and also highlighting where the changes happen, so thanks to them, but specifically, the change was the district will request slash utilize. When I think, when I think about requests, I think about collect, and when I think about utilize, I think about gather, right? So things we collect and things that we, we gather, so things that we're asking for, and then also along the way, things that we gather, that's kinda my mindset a little bit here around trying to provide some clarity. And then, as it relates to both our, our district ends policy and our compliance with our limitations, right? And so then, under evidence, it's, I, I want you to then think then about what we collect and what we gather from parents that are specific to ensuring that we can then report out on our ends policies and/or our limitations. And so it's all about the information in which we either collect or we gather along the way, which I think plays into this Detail Policy Number 2, so.
So I think that you're, I understand what you're saying there, but I think that gather and utilize are different. So like, if you're, if you're collecting the information, that's different, if you're actually using it for a specific purpose?
Yeah, yeah, so-
Help me with that.
Again, it's, it's my way of trying to help explain it a little bit, but when you're utilizing it, we recognize that what's coming into us isn't important to utilize.
Okay.
So we're kinda, we're gathering along the way, and we're gonna utilize what we gather, but we're only gonna utilize the, the most import, you know, what's required, right? There's a lot of information that we could gather along the way that doesn't have relevance to the work, to what we're doing.
Okay.
But we're gathering information that we need to utilize to help, you know, again, back to the, to the Detail Policy, to solicit appropriate input, to have the necessary, to fulfill our ends, right?
And so the, the evidence is changed as well?
Mm-hmm.
Questions about that, my fellow board members?
Hey, the evidence is meant to be representative of, not exhaustive, is that the sense I have here, is that right? There may be other things-
There may be other, I mean, again, as we go on in future, there may be other pieces of evidence that come into play, but from my perspective, you know, again, in thinking this through, this was the evidence that-
Yeah, I mean, what we're trying to do between these two things is a balance between not having information that we really don't need-
That's correct, that's correct.
And making sure, on the other hand, that all that information that's needed is there, right?
Correct. So it doesn't have to be exhaustive.
So this is the category of getting, making sure that the information that's needed the district in fact has.
That's correct.
And that you can demonstrate that it has, you know, so you've listed some evidence that's a positive evidence, is there any instance, is, are there any instances that you're aware of where we found that we did not have the information that we needed for some purpose, some ends purpose or some, this stays, this stays clear regulatory stuff, so I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't think I wanna go there with the regulatory part, so this is, there's things that you have to have from a regulatory standpoint, I presume, okay? Yeah, we really have no say-
This is really-
We really have no say in that, right? Somebody else has-
This is about soliciting appropriate, right? It's about soliciting appropriate.
This is about making sure that we're not going beyond-
That's right.
Those things that we need, but that we're getting those things that we need. So, by the, can I correctly infer that the, because there are no contrary evidence, that you know of no instances in which there's a shortfall in information or we should've had the information?
I would say yes, at this time, yes.
So, the change, the other change is just on page 5, and you added the word probable, and I know, I know we talked about that.
Probable legal activity, yeah.
I think that was all the change.
Correct.
And so I guess I would ask the rest of you, do you, are you ready to go through this summary, and I, the other question is, the person with the most problem with the verbiage here is Martin, and so do we want to go ahead and go through this summary without him and hope to not see it again for a while, or do we wanna wait?
I would say we should go through it.
Okay. Is that good with you?
Yep.
Sounds good. So, with respect to interactions with students and parents and guardians, or those applying to be students or parents and guardians, the superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions, procedures, or decisions that are inequitable, untimely, vague, undignified, or unnecessarily intrusive. Further, without limiting the scope of the foregoing by this enumeration, the superintendent shall not, and Detail Policy 1, elicit information for which there is no need. Is that a reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 2, fail to solicit, solicit appropriate input or obtain necessary information to fulfill the district's end policy or comply with the district's policy limitations. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yeah.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 3, use methods of collecting, reviewing, transmitting, or storing student family information that fail to protect against improper access to the material elicited. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 4, fail to operate facilities with appropriate accessibility and privacy. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 5, fail to establish with students and parents or guardians a clear understanding of what may and what may not be expected from the district. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 6, fail to limit the use of live security video systems to crisis situations and the immediate need of administrators for safety information. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Detail Policy 7, fail to limit the use of security video recordings to inquiries by the police about criminal investigations or by district or building administrators to ensure student, staff, or community safety. Is that a reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I just, I had a question about that, and you kinda threw me that.
Sorry.
So I had sent an email to the board-
Yeah.
-with concern over the types of requests, you changed it to probable illegal activity.
Mm-hmm.
But, again, from the beginning, my concern with this system has always been that it has been installed under the premise that it was for crisis situation, and, you know, my fears would be that it would turn into a policing mechanism, which it looks to me to be the case based on the fact that there have been viewings of the recordings for probable illegal activity, and probable is not something that has occurred and therefore is not, you know, that's not in agreement with the crisis plan, that, I mean, the crisis scenario, that is what the system was installed for, so I never heard back from anybody in regard to that. I mean, I got a response that you'd received my email, but I hadn't gotten a response about that.
Okay, so, David, do you wanna talk about the tre, Trevor and the double?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what that means when I'm talking about-
Yeah, we could do that, maybe what I would suggest is you, is you continue on and maybe complete this, and we come back and, and we talk about that for a bit.
That's fine.
I mean-
Is that okay with you?
Well, no, because then if you completed and then you, you're in compliance, and then this policy is done with review for this year, no, I don't, I don't-
It's your, it's your call, I don't mind, we can talk about it enough.
Not that I, I don't wanna argue your point, but what we're trying to do right now is determine whether or not the evidence and the superintendent's interpretation is in compliance with the policy, and your concern is the policy is wrong, not, and we're, we're talking about his interpretation of that.
I, my concern has always been that the policy is wrong, but I'm also wondering, I mean, here, the issue is if, if, if it's being interpreted as acceptable-
Mm-hmm.
-and that he's in compliance, I don't, I don't believe that he is in compliance, not that you're at fault, David, that's not what I'm saying.
It's all right.
Okay, so, so I think it is, it's not just the policy, it's also the interpretation of the policy.
Okay.
So, I, I'm happy to do whatever you wish, I mean, I think, you know, the Detail Policy, again, you go back to 7.
Mm-hmm.
Fail to limit the use of security video recordings to inquiries by the police about criminal investigations. And so what I've provided in evidence is specific to, I believe, the policy as evidence. And what I will tell you is that there are clearly delineated processes, and we don't, we are not the ones that are most often the ones inquiring about wanting to involve the police. It usually happens from a, a community member, there's been vandalism in the parking lot, and it comes to us through the police, and the police know, the police can't do anything, they actually ask us, us, police chief has to approve, I have to say okay to preserve until the police chief says yes, okay, or not, and does not say okay to everything, because not everything warrants an investigation.
Right.
So it may be, in the future, that we tell you all of the inquiries, and those of which were not pursued, that sometimes you may, this may make you feel that we pursue everything that is, or the police pursues everything that is requested, and quite, quite honestly, I know that's not true. I don't know what the ratio is, but I think that's important.
So these are requests, but not, they have not necessarily all been acted on?
Right, again, and there's others here that have been maybe requests that we've, that the police, we're not gonna look into those.
Right.
Right? And so, again, I, I think that's important, and most important, though, is about how we, how we do this, and how we go about, you know, acquiring, so there is processes, and I think that Kathy's concern is that it's not, you know, just anyone, anyone can turn it on and look at it, no, it's very protected. Again, I, I understand where, where Kathy's coming from, not protected enough, but I think it probably then warrants, if the board wants to continue to, you know, to think about it, then it comes right back to Detail Policy 7, which is about limiting the use. And this is, from my perspective, about the procedure that I put in place to limit the use-
Right.
-of the system. And again-
Specifically, this is recordings.
That's correct, yeah.
Real-time monitoring for the purposes of entrance or something like that is not included in this call.
That's correct.
This is, this is, you have, you can capture the information and it was recorded, now what hap, now what happens to it?
Right, and what I've tried to do under the evidence is just identify that, you know-
Yeah, where we-
exactly what I just stated earlier and where the, where those things are.
I think what we've tried to nudge this over the past few years has been to, if we have the recordings, they're not accessible except under certain circumstances. And then only within a certain limited time period, even though we chose to be silent about that part of it.
And I think what might help community members, Kathy, maybe to talk more specifically. And again, I'm not the one to do that, but, you know, to ask the police department, you know, categories of what determines, you know, Chief Whipple saying, I'm okay with this, you know? Again, with, with the ideas that maybe, maybe he knows that there's, you know, a huge trend going on of a certain situation that could turn out to be very, very problematic for South Burlington, you know? There's a whole bunch of other things going on similar to that. You know, so categories of, that they determine investigatable. And again, we're giving you those here. And again, he may be able to help provide the board with more clarity or individuals like Kathy.
That would be great. But I also have one more question.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
So, you, you said that there were other requests, but yeah, right up here, right in the line above it, you said there have been ten requests by police to view recordings. All requests have been approved. And then you list vandalism, yes, theft, yes. And then you list several, well, four instances of probable illegal activity, which is not vandalism or theft.
Well, it may be. It may be.
But would it have been listed under vandalism or theft?
I mean-
If that were the case, it would have been listed. So, I, it seems to me like, it looks to me like phishing, as I said in my email. It looks to me like somebody was looking for a crime, not that a crime had occurred. Do you see the difference?
I do, I disagree with you. I don't think that they would ask for this kind of recording.
But how do we know? And it's your charge to know, is what I mean.
Does probable illegal activity mean that they are looking, they want to look at the recordings because the illegal activity is probably involved with something the recording could help them with? That the illegal activity is, is a fact?
Yep.
The probability is about whether or not the recording can help you-
Provide evidence to affirm that.
Is that a definition that is fair?
Yep.
Does that help at all? That the illegal activity is, is kind of accurate? It's just the probability of something on the recording being helpful is what they're looking for?
I guess so. I mean, I guess, I guess so.
Because we changed, last, I know you weren't here, but last time we, we, and I'm sorry I went through this too fast, we've been through this several times, so this is a final reading.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, you know.
No, I get it.
I had an email because I couldn't be here.
Yeah, so, the probable, we, we added to just illegal activity, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, it was deemed illegal activity by the police and we wanted, you know, they wanted to see our video recordings to confirm or see if there was additional evidence.
So, that means it was not, it was denied, it was not criminal, after all. Is that what that means? Probable that it was initial, that it was deemed to be not criminal?
I don't think that's true.
Well, again, the, the outcome was, we didn't, we didn't know at the time of request, right? They requested it with the, with the idea that it was illegal. So, the renaming of that really just provided the clarity that it's probable illegal activity. We, we don't necessarily get the results, right? So, we won't, we won't get the results. So, the other part, just to, to try to end this, Kathy, and again, we think categories may be conversation and board may want to consider the detail policy in the future, hearing continued conversation. But important to note that any request that the police department has come forward and said we want, again, it does travel through, it travels through the chain and I have to say it works, or I'm okay with that, and release it. I knew know that the police gets a whole lot of other questions, concerns and requests that they don't rule on, but I, I don't, I'm not privy to that. I'm not privy to dispatch and what might come in on our properties around something they, they need to look into, right? I don't know how many requests happen in the course of the year. I know there's, there's more than what's on here. The only thing I see is what's requested. All right, and so, I, I am not wanting to get into police dispatch and say, you know, these are ten out of the three hundred that actually have, something's been of concern. I have to, I have to believe-
But these are ten that came from the D C F chief-
That's right, exactly.
To you, that you judged met your criteria for-
Right, and currently, I would say if there's a request coming forward in the future that I think is not appropriate, then I will, I'll ask back. I, I question why you're asking for this, you know, some small incident, right? Or some small situation that I don't think does warrant it. I will, will say, I don't, I don't think this is appropriate, right? These requests so far have not been that. So, again, I think the conversation we're having here through the monitoring report is a good one that does exactly what policy governance does, it puts it back on me to say, you know, I am being held accountable to ask that question. So, anyway.
How are you with that, Kathy?
Well, semi-satisfied, I guess.
Okay. So, let's go on to seven. Detail policy seven, fail to limit the use of security video recordings to inquiries by the police about criminal investigations or by district or building administrators to ensure student, staff, or community safety. So, we said reasonable interpretation, adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy eight, fail to inform students and parents or guardians of this policy or to provide a way to be heard for persons who believe they have not been accorded protections under this policy. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance? So, the overall policy, reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Good conversation.
Thank you.
So, you're going to sign that one?
I'm going to sign that one, okay. So, we're going to move to three point two, accountability of the superintendent. So, the school board has had the opportunity to provide David with some feedback based on last year's objectives and David in turn has had the opportunity to provide us with some feedback as well. At this point, the board is proposing a base salary increase for David of two point eight three percent. Performance pay was targeted at four thousand dollars and based on board review of David's progress towards establishing metrics to ensure effective implementation of districts' end policies. It is being paid out at three thousand dollars. This, however, the board feels is offset by significant progress on master planning and visioning and exemplary leadership focused on preserving student opportunities during a work stoppage which occurred in the fall. We're also proposing to increase David's, our contribution to David's four oh three B program from three thousand to five thousand dollars. And merit opportunity, or, sorry, performance opportunity in two thousand fifteen will be earned based on three new objectives. One is the continued progress on establishing metrics for the district's ends policies. The second is district evaluation and execution of master planning and visioning recommendations, including community input and ongoing communication. And lastly, an assessment of the organization with an emphasis on future needs. So, any discussion?
Oh, I'd like to make the motion that the board accept and approve the compensation recommendations you just put forth.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to say thank you.
Well, we want to say thank you, David.
Yeah, thank you, David.
It's a privilege to work with you and your dedication to our district and our students is unparalleled and we're happy to have you here in the job.
Yeah, and I, and I would just say, you know, none of this would happen without good people. So, again, I got a lot of them right, right around here, so, and good, and good community and great students, so. We have our challenges, but we're really, really lucky, so, I'm again proud to be here, but proud to be an employee.
Good, thanks. So, we'll move on to setting the agenda for July eighth meeting. And we know we're going to have a steering committee meeting at the front end of that, which will move our executive session to the back end of that meeting. Do we need to change the amount of time allotted or the start time of our regular meeting?
Well, given, given what you know, maybe, maybe you would like to, I think, when we did this last time for the larger report, we moved it, and Delina had it, it was really her good, good thinking, around seven thirty start time. It seemed like we, that was, maybe we could do a seven fifteen start
Okay.
to allow transition. So, go from six to seven with seven, with fifteen minutes of transition. There may be some, you know, sidebar conversations that go on just in transition between the council leaving. I don't know, you could go through thirty minutes.
Can I just ask a process question?
Yeah.
Given the rules of these sorts of meetings that we run here, how, how bound are we to start the school board meeting at the time that's warned?
I think, I, I'd like to say we're, we're bound by it. I, I think it's important that, you know, time driven-
So, we run the risk that we'd have to cut short the community participation in the other meeting, is that?
Can we start, can we start the steering committee meeting before six o'clock?
It's hard for people to make it, we know that it's, it's difficult. If we go like a five thirty, then, then there's people that can't make the meeting, either work-related issues or other things. So, we've kind of generally got that feedback, six is not ideal for community involvement, but it's better than five thirty.
It worked pretty well the last time.
So, as far as starting, I, I mean, I think to Dan's point, leaving it, keep ours at seven and if we don't start until seven fifteen, the meeting's warned at seven. I think it creates a lot of confusion and, you know, people-
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether seven fifteen is in jeopardy, okay? So, I mean, I know the last time we used about just over ten minutes of the half hour that we allowed. I, but I also had the sense that that meeting was cut artificially short, okay, by the chairperson, okay? Which is the chair's prerogative, okay, but, but I'm, I'm just concerned, especially given some of the discussions we've heard earlier, some of the emails we've gotten, that, that people-
We'll have more.
Are concerned that we are not coming through in all the promises that we made to communicate to the community. And I would like that issue to-
Man, I, I, I would be-
To have little merit, okay?
I, I mean, I would be okay, given what you have on the agenda right now.
We can take off two point one.
Yeah, and I think, I think you could devote, go to seven thirty with a start time.
I'd be much more comfortable with that.
Yeah.
So, how do we communicate the start time, Delina, the change in the start time?
Well-
She hasn't warned it yet.
We haven't warned it, and again, we, we need to work, we'll work with, you know, Cory and the other paper and all of our typical communication processes to get it out, you know? To, to make sure people know that it's going to start at six and it will go, you know, again, I think, you know, a hard, a hard stop or start for the board meeting would be seven thirty.
Okay.
John's got a question.
Hi, John.
Hey, it's about other items for this agenda.
Yeah.
There, if, if these lease rates are approved tonight, it'll be, the lease contract itself needs to be approved on July eighth.
And is that, how long do you think that'll take?
Three minutes if all the questions are answered tonight.
So, that's fine.
And then also, I have to analyze cash flow. We've been pretty blessed not to have, to have borrow much in the last three years, but potentially it should be warned.
Okay.
Tax end, possible tax end.
Anticipation.
No action, it should say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that good?
Yep. So, we'll add those two things.
And take off two point one.
And we can take off two one and we'll bring them, take the meeting up till seven thirty. The regular meeting will start at seven thirty.
How will the response to the Common Roots request be done? And is this the right time for it, or is it going to be a little later?
Um, I, I don't know, I think, you know, I need to talk with John about it, I mean, typically, we do get a fair amount of requests on building use variations and those usually will work through, through us. Again, we're trying to be really mindful about, again, stewardship around caring for the facility, whether it's inside or out, but we've also, we, we have, and I say with John and I have both given reasonable latitude to organizations that also collaborate with us, you know? So, again, I think we'll figure it out. John's? No, you go ahead.
The policy itself says the business manager has discretion to change rates when it's a regular use. But when the, in two thousand twelve, I believe, in April, when Common Roots came to the board, the board was very clear to pay the full fee. And so, I've said I cannot change that if you need to, the board should know about it. And I thought this was kind of a, a good way to, with her little report, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's a discussion that we need to have.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I have some opinions.
Okay.
I don't know if this is the time or not.
Did we, just, am I, did we- constrain you more than you would have been constrained in the actions that we took?
I, no, well, at the time it was proper. I thought the board was right, because-
It was, it was a big unknown at that time.
Yes.
We were concerned about things like, how's this going to work and is it disruptive and liability and damage to the parking lot and all kinds of-
And you know, there, there is none of that. They only have access inside the building. So, and the points that she brought up about the equipment last year and the chef this year, those are, those are real contributions that the district would, I think, suffer without. So, I'm of the opinion that we could discount it. But I, given that direction from before-
If we were to make a passive, if we were to kind of withdraw whatever constraint we put, you put it back under policy governance, that it's your choice to do it, and would that be sufficient and that would-
Absolutely.
So-
Again, absolutely. The answer to that would be yes.
Where would we do that? Can we do that on this, on this agenda today?
Yeah, you can so, but you can so note that it's doesn't, it's not really an actionable item under policy governance, it's, you should, we want to make sure that you, clarity is provided and we provided in the notes that, you know, under, under facility use and fee structure, that we understand, you know, that that's within the business manager's purview and we want to, we don't want to do that. We're at a good place right now because as John said, when we first started, we didn't have control, we didn't have great controls on that. And as a result, it was good for the board to say, kind of no exceptions, you know, only, only, you know-
Well, you would still weigh, you would still weigh, you'd still weigh the circumstances, right?
Absolutely.
You'd still do that.
Right, and that's important for people to hear.
We didn't, we didn't say granted to them.
That's right.
All we, all I'm, all I'm suggesting is that we, and I'd be willing to make a motion that, that, and I don't quite know how to say it, that's my problem.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need a motion, because I don't think we need to act.
We can't.
Okay, so we just need to give you guidance that says, okay, we hear the story, it looks, sounds like a good track record, why don't you guys take it over and run it?
I think there's a, there's a concern always in the past of transparency, right? Even though it was a, were policy governance driven, there was some real directive around shoring that up. So, we, we took that.
I'm sort of thinking that in the, in the beginning, you brought it to our attention that, you know, this is a situation that might be good, it might be, it might be a problem, we don't know what, we don't know which, right?
And I think this in part is some evidence that we've been doing reasonable due diligence around managing that. You may say that, you know, you should have waived that, but-
Can I ask a couple of questions before you do that?
Well, I'm not going to do a motion because as has been pointed out, there's no action required, so, but we would probably ought to have a verbal consensus that-
Right.
An opinion of a board.
Right, let me just ask a couple of questions. Is, I, I appreciate the partnership with Common Roots, but can you, do we set a precedent in terms of other people that we have any kind of relationship with and allowing them to, you know, use our facilities free of charge?
We didn't say free of charge either.
I don't believe so. I, because the policy once again does say that business manager has some discretion. And when I say policy, I mean procedure that's been approved
Right, sure.
long ago. And when that happens, I have to weigh what is the impact on the school district, on the parking lot and that kind of thing. So, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that.
Okay.
We don't make many of those exceptions. There, sometimes there's, for instance, a D C F, we got a request today. D C F wants to do some training in one of our elementary schools. We have to look at that and look at our policy as far as governmental meetings and who they're, who they're serving and that kind of thing. So, we get requests like this all the time.
Sure.
the time.
Sure.
But this, this particular case, they're connected both into our educational system, there's, there's doing some teaching, if you will.
Right.
And they're also providing financial benefit to the district.
Yes.
In a couple of significant ways.
Yes.
Kitchen equipment and transportation vehicles, right?
Right, exactly.
So, I mean, that's, that's, to me, that's a pretty high standard, that if you could get fifteen people that made those kinds of contributions, we, you know, I would pay fifteen hundred dollars to.
Right, and once again, three years ago, that wasn't as tangible, there was some aid.
Yeah, and they, and they weren't as established either, they were, they were trying to get going, they were startup, they looked like they're flying, or at least launching.
It would see the opinion of the board, is that if you were to use that discretion, the board would not have any concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. So, future agenda items?
So, you have the lease, you have the tax anticipation note, take off two one. We'll have, you know, we'll have some consent agenda items, I think we're good.
Okay, so, anything on this now? This is, okay.
No, I don't, I don't think we're, we're, we're not ready, this will again be part of some of our conversations upcoming here over the summers around our EQS and.
Okay.
Curriculum stuff, and we'll be working on that.
Sounds good. So, should we move on to?
Any future?
Any future items? Anything we need to talk about there?
No, other than work, work and get to.
We're working on it.
Yep.
Okay, so, agenda item eleven, we'll consider the minutes of the meeting of June third. Any issues with those minutes? See none. Those are approved. The minutes of June fifth. Everyone okay with those?
Yep.
Consider those approved. And June ninth. Okay. All approved. So, with the consent agenda, you wanna?
Yep, and so, you have, you have to make that one addition, which is Patrick Nepp, which also, as pointed out earlier, is in your hire report, your new hire report.
So, this is the teacher at Rick Marcot, filling the retirement of Lori Parmley.
Right.
Not that anyone could fill the shoes of Lori Parmley, but, yeah, okay.
So, again, this, this is, it's been a busy, busy end of the year with hires, I mean, the board has seen a fair amount of hires coming along, and in this case, you see some additions, fractional additions to round out some of the work that we've, that was approved in the budget, that is so noted in the new hire report. But we've also, as a result, and Julie just said that, we've got some people filling in, filling positions of some of our longtime retired, our retired folks, so. And with that said, the retirement of Kay Howley is the newest one on here, and, you know, Kay Howley's been a long, long time Orchard School employee, and, you know, she, she has just been unbelievable to the district in many ways, and affected many, many children's lives, and she noted in her letter, obviously, I have to at least say that she had my daughter, you know, back in the year, so, certainly I have some parental firsthand experience of the connections that she makes with kids, and she'll be greatly missed, but so will all of our retirees, and I'd certainly like to make sure that, on behalf of the board, we send, we send her your, your appreciation, so, yep. So, that's what I have for comments on that.
Yep, we don't need to do anything with consent agenda in terms of?
Uh, nope.
No.
Again, I think we're good, your, unless there's specific concerns.
Okay, well, we appreciate Ms. Howley's service, and grateful to have had her in our district all these years.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll move on to number thirteen, lease rates for computers, buses, and front end loader. John, you wanna talk about that?
Sure, I'm, I'm, last week, I realized I wouldn't have the rates, and I was really hoping they would come today, so they did, but they came at five o'clock, so, at your desk, there's a, the recommendation. Yes, so, they came in pretty, they're, they're pretty good, we, you know, with the bond bank isn't with leasing, that's bonds, but we keep getting the projection that lease rates or interest rates, whether any kind of borrowing are gonna go up, but these are very consistent with what we've had in past years, and under what we anticipated in the budget. As you know, I'm a little conservative when I do the budgeting, but, so, so, and for Patrick here, Miespol Leasing is, they're out of the Grand Isle County, and they have national connections, they get us the rates, and then help us with the paperwork, so that we don't have to contact banks all over. I've done it both ways in my career, but this is, this is always helpful, and, and so, we then, if the rates are approved, we go to our attorney for an opinion, and then come back to the board, so that the contract can go forth, and we can get the financing in place.
So, you'd be back July eighth?
Yes, yes. It's a, it's usually a thirty day lock on these rates, so, that's the day we'd come back, for sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Do we need a motion to approve the lease rates?
Yes, that's right.
So, I'll make the motion that we approve the lease rates as proposed by the First Nag Leasing. And do I need to state the amounts, two point six nine percent for the four-year leases, and two point seven nine percent for the five-year leases?
Second.
All in favor?
And, and, financing always has to have, this is such a small thing, but it has to have who voted yes, and if there was any no votes.
So, here's my rookie meeting, okay?
So, roll call.
Roll call vote, okay.
So, you already had, you already had a motion?
Motion and a second.
And a second.
All those in favor, so?
Patrick, yes.
Dan, yes.
Julie, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The others just get listed as absent?
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't here, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, what about the bid for Palo Alto, does that have to be action as well?
Yes, it was.
It's a separate action?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing I wanna add to this is, it's a, it's one of our sole source bids, and, you know, we've, we've done this before, and it looks like, wow, we picked it, we've picked it, and we haven't analyzed why, but three years ago, we went through a whole process on the firewall, and Palo Alto won that, that competition. Now, we're just, it's more like a renewal that we did with the auditors or something like that, we're convinced that this is a good product, but it has more capacity, and so, that's the, that's the reason for the sole source. And what happens, we do guarantee, contact dealers, but once Palo Alto gives a price to the first dealer, they don't give any more prices. It's, it's just the way it works.
Yeah.
So.
I do have one question on this, and it's not so much about the purchase itself, it's about the choice, about the URL filtering and not using the URL filtering that's built in with the product and using another product, is to understand what the reasoning for that is, and I don't need the answer to approve this, I just, it is something I'd like.
I'd like to know more about.
A little more about.
Okay. So.
So, the comment specific to without the URL filtering, you're wondering why?
Right, why are we not taking advantage of the URL filter that does come with this product and have a separate, and maybe that's, the long-term vision is to, and just play out this smooth, smooth wall that you have now and move on, but it seems like long-term that would be a cost reduction model of using the suite tool, not having tools separate.
Okay.
And so, I know I asked the question that you think this life, the life of this is about five years, John?
Yes, our engineer, our senior engineer is Jacob Kane, and he answered this, we, we, we're continuing to grow. Stuart has put the brakes on a little bit, I don't wanna say it in a bad way, but the elementary's had bigger, bigger visions than we can afford and that we have capacity for, so.
And really, the capacity is, our pipe is getting full.
Yep.
And we have to do some infrastructure work to fix that.
Yeah, I appreciate what Stuart's done, because the, the administrators and, and all the teachers, they kinda want it all, and so, so what we've done is, two, two carts per school, so it's forty additional Chromebooks, and that'll serve grades three to five, so, it's, but we're expanding at the, at the elementary, so that's, and anytime someone comes in with a smartphone or this, or, you know, I think, I have no power in my office right now, but I have, I have two iPads and a phone and a laptop going, so it's ridiculous, actually.
And you have us too.
You have to come across the department like a George.
Yeah.
I do.
No, he comes over, yeah, he knows, he knows he's welcome.
Anyway, it's, just, just to illustrate what's going on, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion about the bid for Palo Alto Network Firewall? Is there a motion?
I'm, I'm moved that we approve the purchase.
Full second. I wasn't sure what you were gonna say, you wanted to prove.
Oh, the purchase.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Those are the one where you need to, you need to walk over.
What are we doing?
You're good.
That was our right purchase.
And.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, agenda item fourteen, we do these separately, correct?
Mm-hmm.
AP orders forty-five and forty-six. You wanna talk about that, John, or no?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
AP orders.
AP orders forty-five and forty-six.
Yeah, unless there's questions.
Oh, no.
Okay.
They've been reviewed?
Okay, so, that's fine, we don't vote on that.
Nope.
And I, agenda item fifteen is the payable to the Howard Center in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Board approval is required before dispersment of this check, per the exception that the superintendent shall not be authorized to draw orders for any claim for which the amount do exceeds fifty thousand dollars for tuition or contract services, so. I need a.
I'll make the motion that that account payable to Howard Center be paid.
I will second that and add that I would, similarly above, I would like, in a separate conversation, that doesn't have to delay the board meeting, a little more context about what this is, but I know it's a recurring second.
Okay, we'll note that, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Just some passes. I guess I need to take a motion for adjournment.
The only, I just wanted to do a couple quick things.
Oh, sure.
H three sixty-one, and the board, I just sent out some things this afternoon around, that now is changing into Act forty-six.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was signed by the governor, so that will become now three sixty, H three sixty-one will become Act forty-six, so, we'll get used to that. But also, there were some dates that came up, and I actually had asked some of you if you would be willing to go with me on an upcoming July, June nineteenth meeting, that meeting's been canceled, there's, there was some other conflict, so, I'm, I'm, I was told by Jeff Francis that the meeting was canceled, they'll come out with another meeting. Again, there's still a lot of interest in having these and having board members and superintendents attend the meeting, but it was canceled, so, you can kinda take that off your, off your schedule, okay? No date, Dan, no, and I'll, I'll be back in touch with folks as that comes available.
I'd just like to make the comment that I thought, I always think our graduation ceremony is so well-done by our staff at the high school, and I just wanna give kudos to Pat Burke and his staff again, because I think it's a well-oiled machine, and they do such an outstanding job, so.
Well, thank.
Congratulations to the parents and graduates.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, just a quick comment on that, obviously, it's really nice to have seasoned administrators, been doing it, and there's been an ongoing refinement. It's never the intent to make it short, but it's all, it's been the intent from Patrick and his group to be under ninety minutes, and, you know, I think this one was seventy-nine minutes, and, you know, he, again, I think the, there's individual attention to students, yet there's a real efficiency around boards, you know, it's, takes into account students that are walking up and being, being able to be really efficient, and so, it's, it's well-done, and again, I'll make sure he gets that feedback from all of you, yeah.
Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn, and I'll just note that the time.